He called me today and said he would be here. It's a really long journey from either home or work for him, so.
Do we have anybody on the line?
We do not.
Good evening, folks. Welcome to Planning Board. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at that, right on time.
Right on time. Um, he's actually early to schedule for six. Well, we don't have time zone.
He's also, uh, he's also the A&R plan.
Okay, good enough. Public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? From the public, from anybody online, anybody on the board? All right, we'll jump right into it. We have an A&R plan for 995 Reservoir Road.
I, I hope so. Your name's on the, on the sheet?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I just ran back to the office to grab something, some out of breath.
Take your time.
Uh, representing the applicant this evening. So the property, as you indicated, is at Fire Road 16. The, um, the Keating family, one of the members of the Keating family, anyway, is selling, or our client, I should say, has negotiated with the Keating family to purchase a parcel of land. And it's this larger polygon with a hatch around it. And add it to their property that is at 201, uh, property, uh, address 201 Fire Road 16, right there. So we have created a parcel, which is no, which is called Parcel A on the plan, which is 29,400 and change square feet, uh, which will be added to, um, ultimately added to this smaller parcel. So the result of this, um, will be to make the existing piece, uh, more compliant with zoning. So it's a, you know, this, this parent piece of property, um, is an unimproved piece of property. It doesn't have any structures on it that I know of, anyway. So it's just a chunk coming out of that and will be deeded to this property. So it's as simple as that. And there's some improvements on here. Most notably, the, uh, the septic system for this property is, is, is on this, this parcel. So they're, uh, they're looking to clean some of that up. So that's why we're here.
Super. So I remember we saw one year or two maybe more ago on the peninsula, I think. Was that Fire Road 15?
No, it was Fire Road 16.
It was 16.
So the, the board does have a history with this general area. The peninsula at the end of Fire Road 16, the board signed as a single lot A&R back in 2016, maybe?
Okay, it was a while ago.
Um, and it has recently been constructed as a single-family home. And the board at that time received information from Attorney Knox regarding the prescriptive easement and the existence of Fire Road 16, uh, back to the late 40s with electric poles being installed in the early 50s, thus making it away in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control, which in Lunenburg was 1960. Then you are actually correct, Mr. Chair, that later, uh, maybe a year or so ago, we saw another A&R that was cutting a small portion of land from the larger parent parcel in this situation, uh, down adjacent to the peninsula, where a home on the water also had its septic system located on this parcel. So I, I don't expect this will be the last one of these we see.
Right.
Uh, I think, um, along that cove in Lake Shirley, there is a series of small homes that were camps. I think some of them still remain three-season homes. And I think that many of their disposal systems might not particularly be on their property. And I think as the Keating family continues to divest of some of their, um, less active holdings, they will be looking to, you know, have people claim the land that they're using for some manner of cost.
That makes sense.
Yeah, um, the, um, I, I didn't say clearly, but we're calling this a parcel because it is not, we're not creating a new buildable lot here. So we, we intentionally call it a parcel so that we would not have any, no one could construe that we're creating an additional building lot here. We're not, it's not the intention. So just a parcel that would be ultimately conveyed to them. And on its own, would not be compliant with zoning either. So that would, the building commissioner would not be able to issue a building permit as a standalone, uh, property on that piece of land. At least, that's my opinion. I know there'll be a new building commissioner soon.
And frankly, the parcel is two to three times the size of the existing lot.
Yeah, right. But in itself, doesn't comply with current, um, area, uh, or frontage requirements, really. So I don't think you'd be able to make any kind of argument that it would be a standalone building lot. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Thank you. Anybody, anything?
If I may.
Sure.
Um, just to, just to be really overt here, the, the board has previously determined that Fire Road 16 qualifies for providing frontage under the statute.
That's correct.
Okay. And this parcel does have, uh, it looks like 49.52 feet of frontage on Fire Road 16, so.
That is what I would read that to say.
Or real close to it, anyway, yeah.
And currently, the building lot has zero frontage on Fire Road 16.
Yeah. Thinking, nothing about what makes sense, because we don't always get that luxury. But about making sure we're.
Roger that.
But making sure we're in compliance with the actual A&R statute.
Correct, yes.
Great.
So what was the type of access that it provided for the fire, for emergency services?
It was vital practicable access and a suitable grade in construction.
So short of having frontage, there was a requirement, I believe that was the finding, that was a requirement to have living spaces off of the Fire Road.
Well, off of the, on the peninsula, because it was beyond the homes that existed prior to zoning and/or subdivision control, because all of these camps existed. So they were pre-existing non-conforming and were not subject to the vital practicable access statutes. And so because you were building beyond the developed area of occupied homes, there needed to be a determination made by the planning board for that single lot A&R at the end of the road.
Okay.
And I'm, I mean, I've driven my Honda down there. It's, you know, you're not gonna, it, it's not a great ride, but it's, it's, it's accessible.
Anything else? I guess, uh, no more questions, I would, uh, accept a motion.
I would move that we endorse the A&R plan for 995 Reservoir Road.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so don't go far. We're gonna. So we are continuing from our last meeting, uh, a public hearing for 39 Main Street?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, Greg Roy, Dillison Roy. I'm representing, uh, Rob and Colleen Shapiro, who are both here this evening. And I, I gave you an introduction last week, so I won't, I won't, uh, rehash that information. Since we were before you last, we have received a peer review comment, uh, letter from Graves Engineering, which we have addressed formally in a revision that was dated May 3rd. Uh, and I'll go over that in just one second. We have also closed the public meeting process with the Conservation Commission as well, which was done on May 3rd. So that, that process, uh, they have signed off on the, uh, on the, the plans that are before your, your board as well. So Jeff, um, Jeff, um, from Graves issued a comment letter on the, um, boy, I don't remember what his original letter was. I think it was Friday, um, or Thursday or Friday, the, the, after our opening public hearing. And we, um, we addressed all of his comments. I'm happy to go through all of the comments, but I thought for expediency's sake, I would just point out that he issued a new letter just today, on May 8th, that had two remaining comments on the, uh, two outstanding items. One was a, uh, a comment on the bollards, so we, and this is becoming a little bit more of a fad with, um, engineers after the Apple Store incident down south where the car drove into the frontage of the, so this is, this is actually kind of serious business now. We are taking more of a look as to where we're putting vehicle protection between, uh, places where we need vehicles to stay and any pedestrians, and we're proposing this playground area here. So we actually have included a row of bollards adjacent to the, between the parking areas and the playground area. And he just had a comment on our detail that we provided, um, to add a little bit of extra, um, notes and things. Actually, there's a few things on the detail that we provided in the revised plans that didn't plot, and I apologize for that. It's a issue that we do within the AutoCAD era with some layers that are on non-plottable layers. But anyway, we have actually, uh, I actually addressed that comment as well as the next one in a real late-breaking, um, submittal that I sent to Adam and Marjorie. But we added the details, and that was just to specify that these will be six-inch diameter steel, concrete-filled steel bollards, um, and make sure we specify that those are, you know, sort of vehicle-grade bollards. So we did do that. And then his only other comment was relative to the outlet control structure that we have, um, in the basin. We just needed to tweak a few of the, um, a few of the elevations and things to make sure that it jived with, uh, with the, drainage report hydrocad models, which we actually have already done. I realize that Jeff hasn't reviewed that to make sure that they're signed off, but I just wanted to make sure the board knew that they're minor enough that I was able to do those this afternoon, before your meeting, and I did, uh, I have updated those. But that's it. That's all we had. I didn't have any comments from you folks from last meeting, so, um, that was all I had this evening. I'm happy to take any questions or answer any, uh, answer any questions or take any comments.
Super. So I assume that you've received his, his update?
I did, and that, that's actually what I was showing up on the screen.
And what about the, uh, what hasn't Jeff reviewed?
Yeah, well, so Jeff made comments on the outlet control structure, which you can see here on my screen or up on the screen in the back, and on the, oops.
Sorry, yeah, it happened to be on two different sheets, so I had to.
Yeah, it's, it's Zoom that's killing me right now, because I can't switch between, uh, sheets, 'cause it's, Zoom's in the way. Oh, and it closed the sheet. And then there was a, a bollard detail.
Yep, we saw that.
That is here, and it, it does make the note about the six-inch steel filled with concrete, and it, it depicts the depth and finish grade, uh, as well as that it is to be placed on and in undisturbed material.
So I guess the question was, was what part of the?
Jeff has not seen either of those detail updates.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. So my, my recommendation was if the board wished to move forward, we would just condition that those two items, uh, receive, uh, a sign-off from, from the engineer.
Feel good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Okay, um, I'll open it up. Anything else?
No?
I have no other questions.
Nope.
Excellent. Well, it's a very good engineer. The board has no questions. A well-engineered plan. Um, so, um, if there's no more questions, then there's no more comments or input, then we can close the hearing, and, um, I think we've got a review, a decision to review as well.
I would move that we close the public hearing for 39 Main Street.
I'll second.
Excellent. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, yeah, we've got one, one condition.
Sorry, who made that motion, Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Usual suspects.
That means Ms. Reed was the second?
Yes.
Yeah.
The further to the, uh, the further stage right you sit, the more likely you are to be the one who makes the motion.
That's true. Very true.
So right now, it would be up to construction hours is the questionable item, and then it would be adding Condition 18, which would be, uh, the completion of outstanding items.
So the, I would, I would say this is a residential area, so we go with our residential construction hours?
Mr. Chair, my only question would be if we, if, if in the Village Center district, we end up, so, I don't know. If we go with something, if it's common for us to go with something even more restrictive, not looking to put undue burden on them. I just don't know if we, I, for my own, uh, for my own curiosity, as much as anything else, do we treat Village Center the same as other residential? Or do we, or do we treat it differently for hours?
I think we've only had three applications in that area. Since we created it.
Have we even had three?
Well, I mean, we didn't, we didn't do anything on the, the single-family home next to the old primary.
That's correct.
That was in.
Yep.
VCD, and then.
And then the, yeah, yeah, three Lancaster.
Yep.
You can call it Trudy Streets. Everyone, everyone who's been around for more than a couple of years will know what you're talking about.
I'm trying to remember who it was between the two.
Dragonfly.
Dragonfly, yes, yes, yes.
See, I know it was Dragonfly.
Okay. Yep. So, I mean, aside from being across from the Keen Center, um, I don't see, I don't see that it would be any special case, but please add that to that if you want.
My only real thought there was if, being a more, both a kind of more narrow and frequented by pedestrian and vehicle corridor, if that would be relevant. I don't really think it is, truthfully, but I wanted to ask that question and have the thought out there before we just blew past the concept.
Well, um, they're not doing any building renovations, my understanding, and it's.
They're not doing exterior building renovations.
Right, so they're not going to be tearing anything down or having, like, huge construction crews. They will have some site work that'll be, that'll be considerable, but, um, I would suspect that it would be coming in to the job site, working the day, and then leaving the job site, rather than.
Aren't they doing some curb cut work, or am I misremembering that?
They're doing some, some improvements at the handicap.
They were operating from an existing curb cut and a next. Maybe I'm misremembering that.
I believe the curb cut exists.
There's two curb cuts. There's one for the two handicap spots.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's one that's further down towards Oak Ave. That's for the lower access. Um, and they, they are both existing. Um, it's a, it's a town road, so.
My, my only real concern was thinking about the fact that that is a side, a sidewalked area that does lead to the schools, uh, and is on one of the busier sides during some of the commute hours. But I, I'm not really passionate on that. Like, I just wanted to make sure that was in our thought process. But I don't, based on everything you've said, I don't personally see a need to be more restrictive than usual residential.
Okay. Can we make a comment? Would, would you feel comfortable if we were able to make an additional comment to say that the sidewalk shall not be impeded? Construction vehicles shall be, remain on.
You know, actually, I think I, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think I care, but no, I think that would be, I think I would feel better in that particular.
I mean, it's not necessarily going to be the owners and the engineer, but it's going to be the site contractors. And if it's in their order of conditions, then they should be aware of.
Yeah, no, I think I would feel a little better about that, given, uh, given our, that the Village Center is walked and is to the schools, and the goal is for it to be walkable.
One of the few spots we have sidewalks?
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else? All right, well, we will patiently wait for Adam to finish typing up what he needs to, and, um.
Uh, what, did we decide on construction hours?
Oh, no, we didn't. So what, did you add the 19 comment?
I did.
And how, can you, can you read that back to us?
I'm not allowed to read. So 18 is the two outstanding items remaining on the 8th May 2023. Review letter from Graves Engineering, the bollard detail and outlet control structure detail will be issued a clean review letter before the commencement of construction of each item. No construction vehicle will be parked in a manner to obstruct the passage of pedestrian or other travelers on the sidewalks adjacent to the project site.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay.
You know what? I'm gonna change that to public sidewalk. Because if they want to obstruct their own sidewalks, that's.
Good for them.
Sure.
Right. I mean, they're, they're, the building isn't active during that time, so.
Right. Um, so how do we feel, um, so I think.
I think as long as there's, like, access through, uh, along, I don't necessarily see a need to go with unusual, uh, construction hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, so do we want to go with the regular residential construction hours?
Yes.
Okay. Which are, what, eight to, eight to four, eight to five, Monday through Friday? I'm asking.
It, you've done both?
If we wait till eight, then the kids might not be as busy on the sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Is that true?
Yeah.
I don't have kids, so.
Yeah, I can.
I don't think there's a lot of kids walking to Turkey Hill, which is who, you know, 7:30 to 8 is when the high school lands. They have to be at the school by 8.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Eight, that wouldn't impact the buses or the pedestrians?
I, it shouldn't.
I think I would actually be more comfortable with 5 o'clock than 4 o'clock, because that means that they're not wrapping up and moving things out during the school leaving, and I, I don't see that being a, a big loss for the people. I don't think there's going to be a big impediment for the, uh, for people in the, living in the area.
I'm actually wondering if during the week, 7 is better? Because if you start at 8 o'clock, they're gonna start rolling in between 7:30 and 8, which is the busiest time for middle-high school students getting there.
Good point.
I, I concur with that. I think that's wise.
Yeah.
So would we, what, 7, 7:30?
I think you stick with, I mean, 7 is fairly standard. I don't think that, um, there's not an enormous amount of homes over there, and where they're doing the majority of their work is away from the homes, anyway. It's behind the building, adjacent to the wetland area.
They have a duplex there, but.
Yeah, but even that has some wooded cover between the two of them.
True. Okay, 7 to 5?
7 to 5.
I am comfy with that.
Excellent. 7 to 5 it is? And then, um, no construction Sunday?
Saturdays? Usually you do, like, 8 to 3?
Mm-hmm.
How busy is the teen center on Saturday?
Not at all. I mean, as a, as a matter of practice, it's not open.
Okay.
It may be, there may be a special event, there may be a rental, uh, but the, the teen center in general is operated as an after-school facility.
Okay. So, yeah, um, 8 to 3, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
Yep, very much so.
Okay. I think we all concur.
So I guess we. For these who are making my motion, Adam, would you be willing to read again the hours as we've determined them? Like, in one nice, convenient place?
Yes. Oh, you know what? I shouldn't have printed that. We printed the hours as 7 to 5, Monday through Friday, 8 to 3 on Saturdays. No construction Sundays or holidays.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve the site plan for 39 Main Street with all standard conditions, the two additional conditions as detailed by Mr. Bernie, previously, as well as the hours of construction as detailed by Mr. Bernie a moment ago.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the approval, please say aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I make, may I make one statement?
Of course.
Uh, to the applicants, I just want to say thank you. What you're doing is very admirable work in something I am grateful for being in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you. We're, we're looking forward, we're super happy to be coming to town, and we think it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity, uh, for, for the business, obviously, but, but more so for the, of the children and the outstanding support. We're, we're excited to give them this opportunity.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good evening. All right, so. Did anybody have any epiphanies on the master plan committee composition?
I'm interested to see if we got any volunteers.
Uh, we haven't gotten any volunteers yet. I do have some feedback.
Ooh, feedback.
Uh, the library director reached out to me, indicated he was hopeful that the library trustees would potentially get a seat on the committee, and he said, um, "Why did you leave them out?" And I said, "'Cause I completely forgot about you guys." It's not a group that I interact with on any sort of regular basis. They've just gone through their own comprehensive planning process, so there's some experience built into that group. Um, they are very community-focused. They have a, a variety of outreach to multi-generational households and individuals. So, uh, my thought in having that discussion with him was it may be worth converting one of the at-large seats to the library trustee. Uh, and that way, we're not changing the committee composition numbers-wise, but we're bringing in another group to the fold that is probably generally underrepresented in, in these types of processes. Additionally, I got some feedback from our consultants, who I also sent it to. And they said it'll be important to have business owners, younger and generally non-staff, non-board residents involved in the process. Uh, I might even argue these non-affiliates should constitute a higher proportion of the membership. Not that they need to add more seats, 15 is already a lot. But maybe convert one or two of the others that will be directly interviewing Housing Authority, School Committee, Parks, Rec. Obviously, they'll know the political sensitivities involved, but we've seen the discussions get bogged down in town government issues rather than focus on non-townwide issues when staff and boards are overrepresented. Again, valid comment. Um, you know, perhaps Housing Authority is one that could be converted. Maybe Housing Authority becomes library trustee. Um, they are a, a valuable asset to the community. They manage a very small portfolio, and the majority of the day-to-day work is done by the Lemmonster Housing Authority as a vendor or partner. They're part of the discussion, uh, and interviews that the, the group does. They're part of the discussion and interviews that the, the group does, and I think that perhaps, you know, I, I get what they're saying, and there, there may be some value in hearing about housing from non-affiliated folks. Who, who have to live it every day. You know, Parks and Rec, they're an elected board. They have a lot of stuff that they're doing. They have also recently gone through a comprehensive planning process for Marshall Park. There's some institutional knowledge, but again, I, I'm gonna defer to, to you folks. And, you know, same with School Committee. School Committee touches a lot of different places, and they, they bring a, a different perspective on things that, you know, I think can be very political and polarizing, but also can maybe inform the way that we look at other things.
So that was two comments you received, or just one?
Well, that was a comment from the consultants, and then I received the comment about the library trustees directly from the library director.
Okay. So then I'd like to keep that on our schedule for, you know, at least another meeting to get more feedback?
And I expect it will be, I, I've, you know, many folks have responded and said, thanks, thanks for including us, we'll have this on our agenda. I think the political boards will probably wait until their first meeting in June, when they've had new membership and they've reestablished who's where and what the kind of hierarchy is and who wants to do what. I know the Conservation Chair came to talk to me, inquiring about what the commitment looked like. And, and again, I, I told him I envisioned it would probably be eighteen to twenty-four months and one meeting a month to one meeting every other month, plus whatever subcommittees' individuals choose to, to take on as, as members.
Create and take on.
Correct. And I, I expect that each element will get a subcommittee put together, and it would probably be a two-to-three-person group who would be doing the majority of reviewing, commenting, editing, gathering of whatever sense the consultants looking for, but I would expect the consultant will be doing a lot of the number crunching and data analysis and presenting a prose of some manner that the committee will then digest and comment on.
Very good.
At least that's my experience with these type of things.
Anything else on that?
A, a comment I have, and I, it's just a thought that I kinda wanna throw out there as we're doing it. I find myself torn because I want, if the experts we are paying money to are saying effectively, you need more at-large people and fewer committees represented, they're the experts, and I really wanna trust the people who know what they're doing. On the other hand, I'm not always convinced that, I wor, let me phrase, I worry that at-large members will not have a broad enough view that these different disparate groups will end up adequately represented, so I find myself actively conflicted. I'm, I don't have an answer one way or another there. I'm digesting, but I kinda wanted to...
So I, I think what I would offer as additional fodder for you to consider is they did make comment that we, as the folks who live and operate here, understand the political sensitivities of, of the town, and perhaps that's a mitigating factor, or perhaps some of those thoughts that you expressed are reasons why folks who are already engaged may be a better representative. And I'll call back to the discussion we had at the Economic Development Committee last week, where someone asked why we have all these different groups, and, you know, I think you said it very eloquently, this board has made it a, a goal to include as many folks as possible, especially people who may not normally know about being engaged in or participate in, in this type of, of process. And having people who are tuned in and have their own constituency to help magnify those calls for participation, as well as perhaps, you know, fill in some gaps of people who, who wouldn't see some of these other calls. It, it was, was really astute, and I think that that's kind of what the board was looking at, and that's maybe intentionally or unintentionally, I, I don't really know, sometimes that was what I was getting at by trying to include all of these different groups.
Golly, I feel like once in a while I can sound smart. Don't get used to it, though.
So, um, one of the specifics they mentioned was business owners, local business owners?
Yes.
They did, they weren't specific about anything?
No, no, they, they, I think, and, and I think this is something that, uh, I don't wanna say that the town struggles with, but I think that all towns struggle with is, is hearing their business community and having them, having a platform where they can be represented in, in a, in an unbiased or, or nonjudgmental way. And, and I don't, that's not a, it, it's not a calling out anything specific. I, you know, I've worked in a number of communities, I've done business roundtables, and, you know, businesses have plenty of gripes, some legitimate, some maybe out of ignorance, but giving, just like any resident, giving them the opportunity to sound off and feel heard, I think can, and provide information back and can have benefits that, you know, help them better understand what the town is doing and what, where it's trying to get to.
So how about reaching out to the Lunenburg Business Association?
Yeah, and that's, that's, and, and, you know, I think that's where some of those at-large seats would, would be beneficial. You know, and, and I understand the point about getting younger people. My hope is that there are still some younger people on some of these boards that would be willing to engage in, in this type of, of process. You know, and, and I think this board also talked about this, you know, do we need two members of the Select Board and two members of the Planning Board, or should those be at-large where you can maybe target specific or other of those, those target groups, younger people, people who are differently engaged, business owners, that kinda stuff?
Well, my feeling on that has always been that whether or not we're a member of that committee, we can always go to the meeting.
Correct.
So if, if anybody has the inclination, so I, I wouldn't feel bad about dropping those two down to one. How about, how about tenure? How about like maybe a lifelong business owner or lifelong family business owner, or, you know, you know, I'm looking at family farming.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how tenable that would be.
I think you kinda paint yourself into a corner trying to attract a specific person, and, and I guess I'll, I'll turn to the Economic Development Committee. And a member of the Conservation Commission turned into a member appointed by the Conservation Commission because none of the Commission wanted to do it. So, you know, I think, I think it's absolutely wonderful to shoot, to have a farmer on there. Whether they're from who's farmed for ten years or someone who's got a deed that goes back to the seventeen thirties, I, I don't know that, I, I mean, they have different perspectives, but currently they're both operating in the twenty-first century agriculture sphere, and I think that perspective is perhaps more important than, you know, my whole family has been here since the dawn of Lunenburg, which, again, that, that's not to say that they don't have some interesting or worthwhile things to bring, but I think you're probably looking at it more from the, the sphere of operating in agriculture currently.
Sure.
I had a process, we don't have agriculture represented on our list.
That could be fixed by an agricultural business owner, right? Is one of the...
Yeah, absolutely.
Not that it's broken, it's just something that could be added.
Yeah.
Appropriate for the town. All right, so if you guys, if, again, I mean, if anybody knows anybody that might be interested and that would fit in one of these spots, you know, certainly reach out to them, get a feel for their input, and bring that back, bring that back to us so that we can, you know, get a fuller picture of the interest that's in, involved here. Solar bylaw?
Uh, I do have some information from Ms. Mann. I haven't gone through it yet.
Okay, that's fine.
And I don't have driveways and entrances for you.
Okay. So that brings us to minutes approval.
I would be happy to make a motion if I had indication that people, once I know that people are comfy and feel solid in their opinions.
Ready.
I'm good.
Okay. I would move that we approve the minutes for our meeting on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, for the public hearing for three eighty-three Whalem Road from, from April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, for the public hearing for thirty-nine Main Street on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and for the public hearing for seven-five-nine and seven-six-three Northfield Road on April tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Good.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the minutes approval? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion was fine, right?
That's correct.
You surprised me by changing the dates back and forth.
Oh, I just, I went by the way I had them saved in my note document.
There you go.
I'm just reading down my list of printouts on the computer, 'cause I put them in here for my own notes.
Funny, two people looking at a six or a nine on sideline. Okay, committee reports. Open Space Ad-Hoc Committee, we are going to be meeting this Wednesday. The Municipal Building Design Committee, we met last Monday. I think we're gonna be getting back into the every other Monday, so I'm gonna be here on second and fourth and there on first and third. We are trying to put together, I, I'm still adamant about not having numbers at town meeting, but there, that hasn't taken in, in the public group's mind, so there seems to be an overwhelming majority that seems that we need to have some sort of numbers. So the basic, the best thing that we've come up with is to take the thirty-million-dollar new TC Piacios and price tag that we already received, that's already dated, and divide the square footage of the improved buildings by that to get a square footage figure. It looks like we came up with something close to five-fifty per square foot. But again, this is something we just first started at our last meeting, so I'm, I'm pretty sure we're gonna go more in discussion on that. We are pretty solid with our, our four options and the hybrid. The hybrid seems to be the most popular, and it does, it does intend to focus on the three historical buildings, first off, so the Ritter, the Town Hall, and the, um...
Brooks House?
Brooks House. No, not the Brooks House. Actually, we just barely spoke about the Brooks House. So yeah, so that's it. We're still kind of up in the air on, on what to present, and there is a feeling that we wanna present something at the fall town meeting. And then the Agricultural Commission, we will be meeting this Thursday. The Capitol Planning Committee is still not meeting?
There was, um, there was an email that went out to the members just asking to individually respond if we wished to meet, because the School Committee had to, effectively has to make some edits to what the, the air conditioner plan would be for the primary school. And Mr. Alonso, as our chair, said that the feedback was that we didn't, the committee did not feel that it needed to meet regarding those potential changes. I happen to be attending virtually that School Committee meeting, and what a lot of it boils down to is the, the, the cost for doing the air conditioning is wildly higher than expected, but the good news is that they can do, they can basically eighty-twenty and get the gross majority of what they wanted to be done, done for the figure. But there was some concern about, does that set the, like, this, getting air conditioning for this fig, figure is likely never possible again. We lucked out that the lower number we had been working with happens to work in their scenario for getting a lot of work done at the school. I don't know what any other board members or committee members thought, 'cause no one discussed, 'cause we, obviously we didn't meet, but the feedback to Mr. Alonso, according to him, was we did not feel the need to meet. I say according to him only because I, of course, couldn't see it. That is not a loaded...
True. That's true. Just a fact.
Yeah.
All right, so Economic Development Committee?
Met last Thursday, a very, I would say, very productive and informative meeting on multiple fronts. There was some discussion about effectively making the streets in our Village Center District more crossable in some areas with the idea of eventually facilitating better parking or whatnot, because parking continues to be a concern for the Village Center District. In any case, I can get into more detail too, if anyone wants it. There is a, a strong interest in setting up a meet-and-greet between business people, potential, business people in town, potential business people in town, and representatives of town government, including possibly members of the Planning Board, members of Select Board, other groups that might want to be involved, as a way to basically try to put faces, not just with names, but faces with organizations that these, especially the potential business people may have to interact with. And we'll get to some of the reasons why that might be, that was a little later in the meeting too, but, um, kinda setting up effectively a mixer to acquaint them with the individuals in town they'll have to be interacting with when starting a business. And gave some business updates on Lufu Farms in Lunenburg Central. I think that one of the biggest takeaways there is the site preparation grant that has come through that eventually could lead to some better traffic flow on Reservoir Road along, along the area, which just could be good with everything else go, with the construction going on there. There was then a large discussion about, really, some business people or potential business people expressing frustration with the feeling of Lunenburg not being accessible to small business owners. And I was one of the people who pushed back on that, saying like, I, I know from the Planning Board perspective, we try to be accommodating, and that is, it can be frustrating to hear that, that we're perceived as not that way, but I think there came out of it some really good discussion about whether any individual group in town is trying to be accommodating, and it's great... and it's great that we are, but we have a scenario where, to a small business owner, the process of getting all of their approvals can feel fairly, fairly labyrinthian. First, you must go to this building. Well, once you talk to that person, it turns out you actually have to go over here to get this form to bring back to them for them to sign. And then, once you have it, you can submit it here. And, um, now there's a whole business planning document that Adam has put together and has been reviewed periodically by the economic development committee that I think helps a great deal with that. But not everyone agrees that that's enough, and I think it's worthwhile for, as I hope we get more feedback from the economic development committee. Even if none of that existed, I think it's worth it for us as town officials to consider what we have available to streamline that process and make it feel less onerous, um, because whether or not it is true that our process is more difficult than some other towns. It can, if the feeling is, if the feeling is out there that it's more difficult, we're still losing that competitive edge to Groin or any other local, you know, nearby town. And that was just a really big discussion, I felt, um, how a lot benefit. Adam, I'd ask you if you feel I fairly represented that discussion, because you were there for it.
Yeah, I do. It's actually the one thing under my director's items.
Oh, okay. Great, um, so apologies for any thunder stolen.
No, that was, that was good, good setup.
Excellent. Yes, good meeting.
Excellent, excellent. So, um, one thing, and Adam may have already mentioned it, about the parking in the Village Center district is we had a budget for the remote parking.
Correct, I, I think what the economic development committee is looking for a formalization, uh, or formalization, wayfinding, et cetera, to direct folks to park at that location and provide crosswalks at the school street intersection. You know, I think when the select board undertook the conceptual design process for that parcel, parking was a key focus of what they, they did there. There was a significant amount of parking increase, uh, and circulation improvement to that area.
Excuse me, you're talking about 30 School Street?
30 School Street, did I say something?
I, I don't think you, I think you saw my note on.
Oh, yeah, at 30 School Street, maybe I said the old primary. Either way, there, there was parking and circulation improvements proposed as part of that plan. The funding to come, complete the conceptual designs into construction designs was removed at town meeting, and the funding to construct it was never even on the table. I think it was, you know, 3.5 million or so. So there's an open lot there, and the, the building is mostly down, so I expect that people can go park there once they're done with the work they do. It's just not particularly well laid out and, you know, it's not formalized and, and there isn't, uh, good pedestrian conveyance from there back to the village district.
I mean, there really aren't many undeveloped parcels in that area.
Yeah.
You know, sure, I mean, Marshall Park's not in the district, and they're probably not gonna want to have a park being used for parking, but.
It's public space, if, if they have parking, then folks may choose to park there and walk back down, but I, I think it's rather unlikely.
Yeah, it's a heavy walk. I think it was, we specified 500 feet just?
One quarter mile.
One quarter mile?
Which is about 1,200 feet.
Wow.
Right? 1,300?
Yeah, like 12 and 1,300, I think, probably, because it's like 56.
I mean, a quarter mile is what is generally accepted in the planning world as a walkable distance. Most people won't stretch beyond walking a quarter of a mile. For convenience sake.
Okay, so we, uh, are you, the economic development committee report?
Done.
You're finished? Okay, then we'll move on to Stonewater Task Force?
Uh, we have not met since the last meeting, I think we meet next week.
Yes.
Yep. Um, MRPC, we did meet last week. Not too much going on for Lunenburg, um, we're electing our officers next month. New ones, switching out people who have left. And then MRPC also touched on, um, that they're hiring multiple part and/or full-time planners for their planning and development and transportation departments as they are going to be busy in the next several years. At least that's what they are predicting. And then MJTC, we have not met, we meet next week.
Very good.
Maybe this week. I'll look that up.
Alright, on to the director's item.
So, Matt set the table, which is great, because I probably would have taken a lot longer to get it out. One of the things that was specifically mentioned as laborious or labyrinthian is the fact that change in use requires site plan approval. And getting in front of the planning board and all the fun stuff that comes along with that. One or more of the members of the economic development committee, uh, suggested and felt that spaces under 1,500 square feet all have nominally similar parking requirements, and changes in use on those should be an administrative process through the building commissioner in order to allow for actual small businesses to be able to move into spaces without a four to six week delay. So, I, you know, I, I took that and thought about it, and, you know, I, I understand, and I, I don't even necessarily disagree. It's just a matter of this board's comfort with changing the bylaw to reflect that, and then crafting language that would actually have that possibility. And again, I, I'll sort of place the same caveat that I did about the Aqua for Protection District. We have a new building commissioner starting on the 22nd. I wouldn't want us to really do anything prior to his employment and, you know, speaking with him and getting his input on, on how he would see that working and what his thoughts on, um, you know, potentially having language in there that does that are.
Sure, I, yeah. I certainly wouldn't disagree with that last thing, and, and I certainly wouldn't disagree with that site plan approval is a pain in the butt for, you know, a very small business that has a very minor change, but at the same time, that's not always the case. How do we feel about that? And this is gonna be future discussion, so I'll just, you know.
Sure. Is, I, I think a lot of it comes around, like, what is the determination on, like, what is enough change in usage that you have, that we have to, like, revisit how it is that they use the space?
So it would be change in use of zoning category.
Okay.
So if you have a hair salon and you put in a karate studio.
Yeah.
They both fall under personal improvement service. So there would be no change in use, and you would just go about your day.
Right.
If you had a convenience store and you wanted to put a lawyer's office, that would be a change in use because one is retail to professional office.
Right.
And I, I think the, a good example would be, um, the young women who came in with the therapy business down at 1259 Mass Ave, that previously had been, um, a bodywork establishment that fell under personal improvement service. They were converting it to a professional office, they went through the process to do the site plan. And they came in, the board approved it, um, they have since decided not to locate there, but, uh, that was a change in use because it was one to the other. And I, I understand how it can be frustrating, because if you're going from a convenience store to a lawyer's office, you're actually reducing the intensity of the use. The parking is probably similar, traffic patterns are, are fine. If you go the other way, then you're increasing the intensity used, the frequency of traffic, sightlines, internal circulation, all of that becomes potentially more of an issue. But existing space is existing space, and I can think of maybe one or two of these reoccupation of existing space, uh, site plans that the planning board has had real concerns about. So I, I guess I understand why someone would feel that it's burdensome and, and, and for a small business that's operating at that micro level, it is a lot of money and time to hold on to. But then I put on my, well, I'm the town hat, and I say, when someone gets obliterated in a parking lot because it wasn't properly striped, or there wasn't a traffic pattern that made sense for that use, and they come back and say, well, why didn't the town do something, then are we liable? Maybe, maybe not, but morally, it feels ift. So I, I, I understand why people, what, what the, I understand what the issue is, and I understand what the ask is. I'm trying to reconcile how to get there.
I've been, oh, sorry. I've been wondering, uh, because I've been chewing this over a lot. If it's possible for us to identify within the micro-business category, and I don't know, I, I know 1,500 square feet was thrown out, that may or may not be the right number. But if there's some square footage of micro-business that along with a subset of, uh, of uses on our use table are more likely to be easily slushable. And maybe, for, for example, maybe moving from office to personal services to a few other things is completely slushable. Maybe retail into that ca- into that category is slushable, but not out of that category to retail. But maybe there is some, it was in that micro-business group, some level of things we can identify that are really incredibly unlikely to create a problem. And maybe we can find a way to have, that that overlaps significantly with, both with the micro businesses that are likely to open in town, and with the micro businesses that we want to encourage. My only thought there is I hate to actively encourage a bunch of businesses in a way that discourages other businesses that we need. I mean, it's one of those, if you encourage a bunch of offices and never stores, you're going to stop having stores.
Well, and, and, you know, you think about retail, and retail runs a gamut.
Yeah.
Are you selling washers and dryers? Are you selling high-end furniture? Are you selling penny candy and sodas and hot dogs that you're getting massive turnover? And there's everything in between, you know, do you, are you that mattress store that's appointment only? And there's only ever two cars there, or, so, and that, like, even that feels like there's layers that create, you know, inequity in, in how someone may be treated.
And maybe, as I think out loud, maybe it isn't just things on the use table. Maybe it is some set of size, things on the use table, and/or turnover. Or, I, I don't know the answer here, but I wonder if there is some compilation of things we can put together that says, if the previous business fell within this set of criteria, and your business that wants to come in falls within this criteria.
And to me, that, like, I like this thinking, I like that, that's a, it's a, it's a good process. I want it to ultimately be approachable and digestible for a layperson, as well as enforceable for the building commissioner to have the ability to point to and say, here's the criteria that I've evaluated on, and this is why I can do this. And we're not, we're not gonna solve it tonight, but I just, I like, I, I don't know if any of you have looked at our signed bylaw? If you ever feel really sane and would like to get away from that, go try and figure out what you can put at different properties in town, and it's, it's really wild. I mean, our signed bylaw is, it's challenging on a good day. And, and it's one thing that, that I think we really need to address. I've kind of been a coward and have been avoiding it, because signed bylaws are just in, they're like the planner's boogeyman. They, no one's ever happy. You either give people too much signage or not enough signage, and usually it's both. So, like, I've just kind of done one of these with it. I'm hoping the new building commissioner will, will be ready and, and wanna dive into that. Uh, I'm also hoping that through the master plan process, uh, what we get from Inez Associates will kind of point the finger at it and say, hey, really, guys? And, and sort of force our hand, because, you know, maybe I need that a little bit.
So, so how long has it been since, it, it used to be site plan review and, and then?
It used to be development plan review. And then in 2015, 2016, it went to site plan approval? So it's been seven or so years.
So before, there was no teeth? People would, people would say, well, we have to do this, but you can't make us do anything, basically.
Yeah, right.
So they would, they would file a fee, they would come here, we'd say, okay, thanks for playing. Nothing. Since we've changed it to approval, we've been able to, uh, uh, improve a lot of sites, in my opinion. And, and, and I think that opinion has been shared. A lot of these long, long open curb cuts, we've been able to minimize the curb cuts and improve the traffic flows. I mean, the rental place by Mackey's is a perfect example of that. Very, very high traffic area. You know, the, the, the most recent one we did over on Whalum and Electric Ave, there, that's just a tar sea, sea of pavement with a building in it and multiple curb cuts. We couldn't do anything about the curb cuts, but we were able to do some form and function with, with the, with the striping and whatnot. And, and I think, I think that alone is, is an improvement that's worth having the ability to make. But I would, I, I, I do, I do also agree with, you know, that it can be tedious and time-consuming to say that they've gotta wait to, and, and do this, and then have really no comments from us, which is pretty silly.
And, and I think what I'll say is the two examples that you mentioned would not fall under any exemption, because both of those required special permits from the zoning board for the use. So they trip site plan approval under a different threshold.
Okay.
Which, again, I think, to me, sort of supports the, maybe there is a way that these non-special permit uses that fall into some futurably determined criteria can be an administrative process. Because, you know, there, there are plenty of times people come in and I'm like, yeah, sorry, you gotta do site plan approval. I know it feels silly, like, the, the therapist office at 1259, it, like, that was a slam dunk. They had parking, it was off-street, it's, you know, it's essentially a house.
I've been talking before, right?
Yes, yes, that's exactly the.
So, so that already went through, but was that a review or approval?
Well, that was a review, because it used to be Dr. Glow's office. And then it transitioned to the unsavory establishment. And then these ladies wanted to, these women wanted to go in there and do a legitimate business. And, you know, there, there was no reason that they couldn't or shouldn't, other than that criteria. And they were commendably flexible with doing it and, and willing to listen and willing to put the stuff together. to put the stuff together. And it's, to me, I feel ashamed that they're not located there right now because I think what they're doing is important work and it would be a boon to the community to have them, but that's really neither here nor there.
I, I do want to add that in the feedback from the Economic Development Committee, because I did push back on some of the idea of even site plan approval being that difficult because things are waivable in situations where it doesn't matter and you do have to hire, I get there's an expense in getting an engineer or something, but people who know the process are very good at saying, these things aren't going to matter because they know that they don't factor in and know that we're very likely to agree.
And some folks don't even hire engineers. They're able to navigate it themselves.
Yes. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that their frustration was not, was in no way solely with our board as discussing here tonight, but was very much, like I said, at the fact that you need to go to 15 different places in town and, well, you have to go to this person and now you have to see this person. And lacking the resources of a larger community that would have someone whose job is to professionally guide you through this process, we find ourselves as well at a competitive disadvantage to some of the bigger towns nearby, Fitchburg, Leominster, small cities, who do have someone who can walk you through that process so you're not the one who has to know to go to all these different individuals and go to them. So I think it's important we be having this discussion, but I think it's also important we find a way for this discussion to move beyond our group to other aspects of the town. So I don't know with whom that buck rests.
The master plan. I think, I mean, there's an economic development element and I think that that's important. You know, and I will say that I operate as the person who would do those items and I spend a lot of time talking to prospective and current business owners and outlining the process and how one moves through the process. I will be the first to say that I am not always able to handhold somebody through the entire process just based on the variety of different things that I do on a day-to-day basis. But I don't think I've ever turned anybody away when they called to ask a question or walked in and sat down in my office. So I, you know, I was not upset, I was a little frustrated to hear that it's, it's difficult to get information because, you know, I sometimes feel like I should just shut up because I'm giving people too much information. You know, and I guess when I see their eyes glaze over, I should probably check in and make sure that they're, they're still there following, but. So I, you know, and I bring this to the board because this is what you can take action on. And it's a discussion I think is important for you as elected officials to participate in and have some thought about.
Not to, not to like shunt off responsibility entirely, but like, what stops the business community from like designating or setting up their own liaison who like understands what our process is and is their coordinator between like whatever business they want to do and the town?
I would say funding and time.
Sure.
You know, I mean, the LBA is a wonderful organization. They are, I think, more of a service organization than they are an advocacy organization. They do a lot of community service. They do a lot of, and I, I'm, I'm going to preface this by saying they're not BNI. They're not doing that type of networking. They're not looking for commitments or anything from their members, but they do a lot of business connection where members get together, they do events that benefit the community, but also those business owners get to meet each other and, oh, I didn't know you did that and they're in town. My business could use something like that. Here's what my business, and oh, I know somebody who could. And so it does a lot to create a network amongst businesses that keeps services and procurement semi-local and creates a network of connections in the business community. But unlike, say, a Chamber of Commerce, and even they, they, I don't think have permitting arms in the same way that you're envisioning, but, I mean, that would, maybe that's what I'll do when I retire. I'll go and, you know, but I think, I think paying someone to do that is, is a stumbling block.
Sure.
And if it's a member of the business association, they're operating their own business, plus they're giving themselves to the nonprofit, so.
Sure.
And I get what you're saying. That would make sense. I think, again, we fall victim to being a small town. Because if you were in a Leominster or Fitchburg or Worcester or Brockton, they have the ability to create these things like called business improvement districts where they designate a geographic area, the businesses there are required to pay into a special tax fund that creates a board and incentives for reinvestment in that area and some staff that can manage that, but could also do some of these things where they're shepherding those businesses through processes. And I mean, there's a lot of different schemes and ways to do this, but we're a little Lunenburg. We're not, you know, and, and we have a great business community, but they're not vast, they're not well-funded, they're geographically disparate and they, there isn't a connecting theme where they have a funding mechanism and staff and that kind of stuff like a larger city would.
Sure. Okay.
So I mean, and I think that's a, it's a long-term thing that the town needs to look at. I think there's opportunities for, you know, part-time staff to take over some of the development process, some of what I do with you folks, to free me up to do some of that other stuff. Only because hiring someone just to do that, I think, would be a minor job and what you folks do could fill easily a halftime position or so. And I'm, I have a lot of experience. I've done this in a variety of different places and I can really kind of frame what is happening between different departments. And so I think bringing someone in just to do that puts them at a disadvantage.
Sure.
I mean, we're not going to solve it tonight.
Good question though. Oh, and by the way, we don't have a C, Community Development Corporation, but Fitchburg does and they do help Lunenburg residents.
Okay.
Interesting.
So that is the end of Director's Items. We have our meeting schedule, 6:00 PM, May 20, town election, May 22. So we have May 22 and the first, the first, second Monday in June.
Yes.
All right. On going items, any of those we want to hit on?
Uh, no, I think they're all slowly moving along. MRPC is working on the MBTA stuff. They're doing a lot of GIS analysis on where and how we might be able to locate that district. And I expect we'll see something this summer.
Okay. I think I heard, and it's not on here, but I think I heard mention of an update on Lufa. Did you have an update on Lufa?
The update is I haven't heard an update.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's what I figured. Have we got anybody with us on line?
We do not.
And there's nobody in the audience? So that leaves it up to us to fill in this board comments and concerns section. Do we have any?
Nope.
No? Okay, I guess then, if there's nothing else, then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on adjourning? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.